Email to the village and article regular council meeting, April tenth. Yeah, the roll call, please.
Mary Moly, Derek Karen Sully, Eric Beatrice Greenlee, John Schluter, John Bolick, Jenny Owen, Brad Chris Ryan, Richard Wasowski, Mark Wenz, Jason Bus, Jason Walker, Monica James here, Mayor Jesse Mihas.
Here.
I'm Mr. Mayor. Jeff Bolick called me earlier and said he had the food. I said, you keep it.
Yes, but he's not coming.
Yes, so just wanted to let you know that he did tell, called him.
Thank you.
Don't be getting flubbed in burbs in six hours.
Yeah, he's not well.
Can I get the approval of the minutes, please?
Can we make that motion? Second.
Motion being by Mrs. Sully, second by Mrs. Volney. Questions, comments, amendments? All in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed?
One.
One abstention.
Four votes, yay. Mrs. Greenlee, abstentions.
Okay, moving on. At this time is there anyone in the audience that has anything for us today? Okay. Reports of municipal officers, the mayor doesn't have anything at this time. I will, uh, so we'll be at the next meeting, but I will keep calling you now and report.
One thing I have a party in the audience, two's a party, three's a crowd. We're not a crowd yet.
Just wrote a small report today. OTAS is going very well. It's working well. There's little things I still have to tweak and get some other reports generated and out to everyone. And then this past Saturday from one to three thirty, I attended an OTAS update training that Heartland Design hosted at the Holiday Inn in Richfield. That was very informative. Basically what they're doing is OTAS is a DOS-based program and when the new update comes out later in the fall, it'll be completely a Windows program. So it'll have more features to it because you'll be able to use your little pop-ups and close a window, minimize it while you go somewhere else, which you can't do now, so. That's all I have to report unless anyone's got any questions.
It's not like we should be after relearn.
No, 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 no. It, no, no, there, it could basically stay the same. They're adding a few features, but nothing dramatic. And that's part of what this training was, or this class this past Saturday, was to show us some of the updates that'll be in the future.
At the end of your report?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Engineer, Mr. Wasowski.
The Sagamore Hills improvements, I attended a meeting with the Walton Hills Valley View Sagamore Hills to discuss possible resurfacing and minor improvements to Sagamore Road between Canal Road and Northville. And the cost is estimated two and a half million dollars. Our share would be a hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars since we own seven point two percent of the road. If all the communities agree, all four of us, that they would apply for issue one funds for fifty percent of the project through Hoka County. We will need consent legislation. Those applications go in this year, I believe, Hoka County in September. They're submitted later in the month in Southern County. So it's just something to think about. I told them right now we didn't owe the money and until we get the checks from the state, we're not doing anything, so. I'll put that later. Cranbrook Drive construction plans, of course I stopped working on those a couple months ago because we didn't have the check. And because these checks are gonna be delayed, so it looks like on August first, I recommend that we not did the project in the fall because they just wouldn't have anywhere near enough time to do anything major. We'll get up with the road that's torn up and be a mess really, the whole winter. I recommend building, bidding in next January or February. That's when we get our best prices on the public works, Josh, for bidding. Do it in the fall, spring, summer, and fall, or do the project next year. Some of that New Santeri Surph pump station on the agenda tonight's ordinance, a resolution for the last phase of the project, which is Houghton Road. Engineering cost is thirty thousand, seventy dollars, which the state will pay eighty-seven percent of. I've been working on the preliminary design now, it's all done. That portion of the project is all done. Silverware is all done. I'm working right now on Houghton Road and state lottery plans. They're coming off pretty well. I planned a bid, had a portion of it in May, second and third week in May, and opened the bids up in the middle of June. The Racino traffic signals, To Dot and I reviewed them in stage three, which is the final set of plans, and forwarded comments to GPD. It was very, very minor comments. They'll fix those, get another set for our signature. We still haven't gotten the legislation and comments from the Walton Hills Council and their engineer because one signal is part of Walton Hills. We have to have their approval. The department has to give their final comments. As soon as they do, I'll sign the plans and hopefully get this thing moving. State Lottery Commission, million dollar check. It was supposed to be here, I don't know. They were supposed to have this contract resolved by the end of March. We have the check first week in April. It looks like now they'll have it resolved around July fifteenth. We have this first check to us by August first. We hope. Go look. Northville Racino construction, construction's going on real well now. It really, the last two weeks have been really moving pretty good. You go up in that area, you'll see the steel's going up on the building, doing a lot of grading for the new parking lot expansion. And early weeks, facilities are really putting in. So I'm finally looking optimistic on this day. It may be done in December. Northeast Ohio Watershed Advisory Committee, the first meeting is gonna be on Monday, I think it's Monday the fifteenth, at four thirty at the Richfield Village Hall. I'm one of the members of that committee representing the village in Northville, so I'll be there. The Regional Stormwater Management Program Service Agreement, the mayor and law director and service director and I all received copies of this new program agreement for our review and comments. They're due by the end of July two thousand thirteen. I'll review this probably late May. I'll look it over because I got a lot to do right now and such stuff. And we'll get their comments back to them. I'll talk to law director, the service director, and the mayor, probably early June. See if they have any comments with this new common letter. And that's, I put in a copy, the email from Eric Yessenov, who works in the governor's office. He's the key man on this lottery stuff. Basically telling us we're not gonna get the money until around August first. And I showed the map of the Sagamore Road proposed improvement. And you see, we have very little of it in Northville, only seven point two percent, so. We can use the Summit County if you miss the license tax money for that project or general fund or whatever. We'll find a making decision on it. That's it?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wasowski. Law Director, Mr. Brian.
Briefly, mayors, you know Chief Bus, who and I have been working on the fire agreement with the racetrack. We're still working on that. We're getting toward the end. I think we have the framework of the agreement. Chief Bus is looking for a used ambulance and trying to figure out what will work and if there's any financing options or what we're gonna have to pay for it upfront and how the track's gonna be reimbursed, so. That should be figured out by the next. There was another issue. The county prosecutor's office sent us a letter on behalf of the Summit County Law Library stating that we should have been paying half of our mayor's court traffic fines since nineteen ninety-seven to the law library and portion of our liquor violation funds. So they sent them to all the mayor's court communities in the county. We persuaded them that they were mistaken as the interpretation of the statute applies to only state code charges and all the charges that are heard in mayor's court are under our local code.
And so since when, ninety-seven?
Yes, so they agreed that they were mistaken, so we don't have to worry about that.
Ninety-seven.
Wow. I mean, it wasn't a great achievement, but I guess another county.
I just want to tell them to send the million dollar check.
Another county in southern Ohio, I guess their prosecutor's office did it. People didn't realize the money got paid, but. So it's kind of a piggyback thing. That's, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brian. Partner here, please Chief, Mark Wenz.
You have that information I gave you on the vehicle. I think that's part of your report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if there's anything there that you want me to discuss, I do have to entertain that. The only other thing that I really have is that you're aware that we had the picketing down there for that week. During the course of that, the violence did escalate as the week went on and it necessitated us having to use additional manpower from not only, on-duty manpower from the other communities, plus we called in the sheriff's office and plus I had the, I had a thirteen-member Metro SWAT team unit here for that Monday morning on the twenty-fifth in anticipation, according to the union people there, they were gonna have two hundred and fifty to three hundred ironworkers there in support of the union there that Monday. Obviously, that didn't happen. I talked to Bill Orr, the union leader, Monday morning. He was there. He had told me that he was gonna call me Sunday night at home to let me know that they had reached a tentative agreement, but he didn't think I'd believe him since it was coming from him and that, so. He figured that he was just gonna be there Monday and act and he would, he would see how things went and he would turn away anybody that was there from the union showing up. In light of the violence that occurred during the week and the cost of additional manpower, I had, I did have a discussion with Mr. Orr regarding what it cost the village. For the most part, we used on-duty officers up there. There was, there was some overtime and obviously we had to have two of our cruisers parked there for eight hours a day for six days the first week and then three hours that Monday morning. So I did bill the union. They, they are expecting it. Bill said that they would, they would be picking up the tab. So they were billed for our, our cruiser use, the additional manpower overtime that we accrued and also the cost of the call-out of the Metro SWAT team. So the total that they have to, we've given to them is five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cent, seven cents of that belongs to the village. So we should be getting the check to cover the manpower plus the cost of the two cruisers up there and the fuel consumption. So I don't see them not paying it because they said they were going to. They're also picking up the tab, allegedly, any of the damage that was done to the non-union members' vehicles plus any damage to any of their equipment, they're also replacing. So somewhere along the line, the message apparently got back that who they were blaming for the breakdown, it was more on the union side than it was on Mr. Millstein's side and that, so apparently they are willing to pick up the tab, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Right, Chief, Jason Bus.
I'll pass that out. Today, we responded a hundred and twenty-five incidents so far. Hundred twelve EMS, thirteen primary fire. We went ten times to neighborhood communities to the lottery. You know, response time a few times. Someone calls nine oh one. Did we get on scene? It's three minutes, forty seconds. Of course, RAC's included a little bit more of a fire inspection report on his activities at the different buildings. It's included on the last page. Things that are going on that we've talked about. I, we are moving forward with promotional testing at the fire department. I had twelve people take a written test. That was created. Only four people are moving on to the promotional. So I know when we talked as a group, we thought there needed to be more, so I need to be four people. And that's just the scores that will be moving on with those four people. I'm, you're a good candidate. We're doing some of those annual tasks. We talked about ladder and fire engines. It won't be tested tomorrow and to meet our annual compliance on those issues. The Southern County Special Operations Team, they provide hazmat crews, rope rescue crews, special collapse, water rescue, all the different special rescue situations. They've contacted me and they're seeking members. It does not cost the village to train people to be on the team. It does not cost the village for their equipment. All this stuff is pretty much provided by the team. The only things we're required to is if once a month they have a drill, they go to two hours of paying for their time at the drill. So I am seeking people in the department to be involved with the county team. Some that really kind of happened in the past before and it's good to have members on the county team. The mayor mentioned briefly about the racetrack. I don't know if they need to have a fire and safety meeting to talk about. A couple people being sworn on possibly to help handle the racetrack issue and exactly everything that's going on. I don't know how to speak council with with everything.
We were pretty much waiting until we had the contract in place.
I think, I think we can close maybe in the next two weeks. We need to schedule something for them.
Yes, definitely.
And as far, as far as the racetrack goes, I was curious how, when it ran, when they opened, the fire department ran five EMS calls and one fire call on opening day, so. Went to six incidents the first day and we kind of keep watching, see how they do.
Wasn't it just yesterday?
Yes, it was a significant increase. I don't know if you hear anything on the police side.
No, I haven't yet because their, their chief wasn't even at the opening, so.
Yeah, I just have, no fire request. It's hard to go. I think we're busy. And then just to end, we have responded to some pretty major incidents in the area in the past few weeks. There was a pretty big house fire in Macedonia last Friday. We had six of our firefighters there for, I think, about five hours. There were several injuries at that fire. None of our, I remember were hurt, but we did help Mexico for quite a few hours. There was some accidents down in Northfield Center that we provided some much-needed manpower to. We had two heart attack calls that we came, we provided medical care to people we need and they both had very good outcomes from it, so. You guys are out there doing the job as needed and participating in the community very well right now. That's all I got.
Great report. Thank you.
Very informative.
After those two reports, I feel safer.
Well, it looks like fire prevention's going very well.
Fire prevention is going very well. I think Jason Walters is working well with Chris and I know Howard, maybe for a second. I think he's working well with them. I had no idea.
You must help be getting emails.
I just receive emails. But no, they're working very well. They had a bunch of issues with the Vivier MI and they've worked through all those issues. Chris made a very detailed list of problems and fixed them all, so. And it's going very well. He's hoping to get more annual inspections done in the next twenty months. He has some personal things keeping some of his time busy.
Great. Thank you. So I conclude your report?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Service and building, Superintendent Jason Walters will be there in the next meeting. Moving on, municipal, force of municipal boards and commissions, planning commission, Mrs. Sully.
Either Rich or Brad, is there any need for next week?
No, I haven't received anything for next week, so it's pretty much too late at this point, so.
And how, how are we handling this? Have you been reminding when there isn't a meeting notification? Is that something that Lisa's doing?
Yes, Lisa Rodriguez usually calls every one.
Thank you, Mrs. Sully. Cemetery Board, Mrs. Greenlee.
We have a meeting the sixteenth. That's about six thirty. It was changed. How many is it changed coming up?
Sixteenth at six thirty?
Eight, mhm. Seven here.
The Recreation Board met. They're looking at the possibility of planting some flowers up at the parks and up at the town hall this, this spring. They have really no plan yet. They're just kind of brainstorming of what they want to do.
Charter review, Brad.
Charter review commission did have a meeting last week and concluded their duties for this year. Is going to be a recommendation, one charter amendment with respect to aligning the mayor's term back to the calendar year, so. That should be something that will be submitted in the next meeting or two for council's review. We have some time before it is to be sent to the county for placement on that one in November.
Was there a need for another charter review commission meeting by?
No, we're, we're done, so. Charter review commission will be convened in four years.
Four years. Okay. Thank you. Reports of the standing committees, finance, Mr. Bullock is not present. Does anyone from that committee have anything?
There's gonna be a finance meeting on the twenty-fourth of this month at six thirty.
Twenty-fourth at six thirty. Rownton Public Works, Mr. Schleeder.
Yeah, I was just, you know, driving by the construction site and I noticed when everything was frozen and muddy and that and then all of a sudden we got the dry days and the dirt became like a powder and we've gotten rains and I noticed we're getting a lot of dirt, you know, on the highway. And I said, hmm, maybe I ought to say something, but then I noticed yesterday, you know, the street, yeah, now are we doing that or are they doing that or how?
That's on the track.
It's on track, okay. Well, I've been in construction before on roads and all that and know that that is always something that they need to keep up, so evidently they're gonna take care of that then.
Yes.
All right, that's fine, good enough. Wasn't quite sure, of course, rain's got taken care of it right now, you know, but, all right, that's all I didn't know.
Thank you, Mr. Schleeder. Alton Water, Mrs. Greenlee.
Nothing at this time. When is our contract up for the rubber? What the rubber's coming?
Brad.
Um, October. So, yeah, I mean, I have everything out to do, the specs on there, so those are coming.
It's October first?
Yes, so next week I should be working on those or probably next meeting to send out the paper.
Should I conclude your report, Mrs. Greenlee?
Thank you.
Thank you. Illuston Grounds, Mrs. Sully.
I don't have anything.
Wages in working conditions, Mrs. Bowlen.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Fire and safety, Mrs. Volney.
Everyone has a copy of the proposal to purchase a two thousand nine Impala LTZ with the trade-in of the chief's vehicle. He briefly went over everything with us before the meeting to explain how Spitzer is bending over backwards in essence to, and, and we appreciate too that, to get this vehicle. Is there any discussion about it? I'm, I believe I called or emailed everyone and I apologize. It's been a very, I have to explain, it's been a very, very busy week. I work for CPA, so. This is not, if I've ignored any phone calls, it's not because I don't like you. It's just I've been overwhelmed. So that's why I kind of used, utilized the email late at night or early in the morning to, to get some of the information out. I'm all in favor of this. I think, Brad, you had said we didn't necessarily need legislation about this to?
It's not a ODOT state bid price purchase. We don't need to do that for fire legislation, so, I mean, we could approve it just by a vote.
Is, what is council's pleasure? I always wanted to say that. That's beautiful. I think it's an excellent deal. Sixty-six thousand miles less. Last, as you said, rest of your term and we're actually in essence getting the same price for the vehicle.
If that's within the budget.
Pardon?
If it's within Mark's budget.
If it's within, you know, Mark's budget, it's, I think it's a win-win for both Spitzer and us, so.
Well, I appreciate kind of like the thought of how that we could do this. Five years looking at vehicles, look at how to do it in rares and, you know, all of that to make it happen, you know, so it's not, so it works, you know, and then the advanced planning of cutting down manpower, maybe not having as many vehicles. So when we are voting on this, it looks like there's been a plan five years down the road.
Yeah, there is.
You know, to kind of like is gonna be beneficial, you know, to the council, so. You don't always get that. It's some, just my vehicle, but it seems like there's been a lot of thought, forethought and ideas that you put together and packaged to us. At least that's what I was getting, you know, before the.
Right.
And I have to say, I'm, I'm really for this because the chief said he's gonna drive down to Ohio City change now.
He is.
When Michigan's going down there to beat him, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I think the emblem needs to be put on the car. That's the only way we're gonna pass this.
It's gonna be on the side.
Isn't that just their IQ?
Automatic shut, shut-off button if it crosses the. Self-destruct.
Is that your commitment or I'll make a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the vehicle within Mark's budget and.
Purchase of a two thousand nine Chevy Impala LTZ for the purchase price of seven thousand, seven hundred, fifty-two dollars and seventy-one cents from Alan Spitzer.
Spitzer.
Motion made by Mrs. Volney. Is there a second?
Do we need to put it on the agenda first?
No, I mean, this is just, we're just approving expenditure, so.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Schleeder. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Thank you, Chief Wenz, for doing the due diligence and, and.
And we're still working on Alan Spitzer for the, for the donation, though.
You haven't given that up yet. That's good.
Brought that up to Jeremy fairly often, but in fact, the mayor found out that Jeremy is a graduate alumni of Western Reserve Academy.
Alumni.
Also, he was up there with me the other day, so they hit it off too. But we kept on pounding away at the donated vehicle for the, for the fleet, so we're still working on it.
As in regards to a fire and safety committee meeting, do you have an idea of when you may want to have a, or do we want to just table that until next? Next council, mayor's gonna be out of town.
You know what, though? If, um, if it were to hurt, should just start talking about it now, how many people are you gonna need? Because you already know that and I'm pretty sure the next week or so, we're gonna have a signature from Rod.
I would say either next week or the week after. I was more convenient for everyone, I would say. I was trying to see a date yet, but, when's the date?
Yeah, it's the ten. When's either ten?
We probably would know by beginning of next week, so I would say towards the end of next week or early week of twenty-second. Right.
Well, what we could do is move finance up to six and have fire and safety at six thirty.
Can you read the twenty-fourth?
So, can you, yeah, or is your schedule?
Twenty-fourth, I think it's the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Okay.
So finance at six and fire and safety at six thirty?
Um, if you'd like to come, not so much for finance, but, but, I mean, if you want to come to finance, everyone's welcome at any committee meeting. And, and since you asked, you can bring cookies. No, I'm just teasing. Okay.
Six thirty, okay. Finance at six.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay.
Hopefully we're more sophisticated than.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Volney. Legislation, Brad.
First is ordinance two thousand thirteen thirty-two, third reading, emergency ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be a public purpose describing the public improvements to be made to directly benefit such parcels. Requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments. All pursuant to Ohio revised code sections fifty-seven oh nine point four zero, fifty-seven oh nine point four two, and fifty-seven oh nine point four three. Is there a motion for passage?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sully, second by Mrs. Volney, any questions or comments? All in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Next is ordinance two thousand thirteen thirty-nine, an emergency ordinance amending section twelve sixty-two point zero five of the planning and zoning code relating to permit fees. This is on second reading, I don't know what council's pleasure is.
Third, just a reading?
I, yeah, I think we should, if, 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 keep it going, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, that will be on third reading, next meeting. Ordinance two thousand thirteen forty, an emergency ordinance amending sections ten forty point zero one, ten forty point zero three, and ten forty point zero five of the Streets Utilities and Public Services Code relating to water line permits and tap-in fees. That will be on second reading tonight and will be on third reading next meeting.
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand thirteen forty-one, an emergency ordinance amending sections ten forty-two point zero four, ten forty-two point zero five of the Streets Utilities and Public Services Code relating to sewer line tap-in bond and inspection fees. This will also be on second reading tonight and third reading the next regular meeting. Next is Village of Northfield Resolution two thousand and thirteen, it's forty-eight?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, okay. Um, okay. Uh, an emergency resolution authorizing Ethanics Inc. to do a final design work for the Houghton Road section of the Summit Avenue, Northfield Road, and Houghton Road sewer replacement in Elm Station Elimination Project. Rich, we already discussed this.
No.
Is there a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Second.
Motion by, here, Mrs.?
Bowen? Miss Wong.
Second by Mrs. Sully. Um, all in favor of suspending the three reading rule?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion for passage?
Would for passage.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Greenlee, second by Mr. Schleeder, any questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor of approval?
Yes. Yes.
All opposed? Okay, and then, resolution two thousand thirteen forty-five is an emergency resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Orianna House Inc. for the provision of community correctional services. And again, this is, um, for sentencing for multiple OVI offenders, um, through Stow Court, instead of going to jail, they go to Orianna House where they get education treatment. We renew this contract, uh, every year, the price has not gone up in several years and it's very minimal, our expense in here, because we only pay charges under village code offenses, not state of code offenses, which most of the, the long time stays are under. So, if there's a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bowen, second by Mrs. Volney, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion for passage? Motion by Mrs. Greenlee, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowen, any questions, comments, or discussion?
Just, just so you know, from our standpoint, in the twelve years I've been here, we have probably only used them or been built by them, I can probably count on one hand. So it's, you're right, it's very infrequent, maybe once every two or three years, we actually have somebody sentenced.
It's usually less than. It's usually less than two thousand dollars a year, I think it's.
Yeah.
I had a question, Article five, um, now, when this happens, and I was, since I'm a little bit newer, you know, I, I've missed the time to say this, so, um.
Really?
If somebody does something, you know what I'm trying to say, and they're not from Northfield, because, uh, it says, um, uh, vendors are to be residents of Summit County, non-violent, and to determine, uh, so what if they're, oh, what if they're not from Summit County, what happens then? Do they go somewhere else, is that what happens, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Probably go to.
They'll, they'll go to county jail.
The same, the same way, the same way we do our diversion program, uh, like, if it's a, if it's someone from outside Northfield, they would send the, they would send their juvenile diversions here.
Uh-huh.
If they're a Northfield resident, but if we rest in Northfield, if we rested a Stow kid shoplifting here in the village, we ship it to Stow.
And they take care of their own.
And it's kind of the same thing there for this, if it's a Summit County, it stays at Orianna House, if it's someone from outside Summit County, then they would, it was.
Probably, county jail, they, they, or, you know, it could be if it's under our code, possibly, yes, it does.
So, so we basically just pay for those residents that are, that are in Northfield then?
No, it's, these are, you know, the offense, it has to be, you know, drunk driving offense that happened in the village, we would make the arrest. And it's usually going to be something that gets resolved at Stow Court rather than Mayor's Court, something that, um, is a multiple offender, um. Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Um, all in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? And, um, we also have, um, resolution two thousand thirteen forty-six, which, um, was, everyone was given a copy today that was not in the agenda. This is the police vehicle that we already authorized the purchase of, um, was going to be financed through First Merit Bank. And council wanted, um, preferred to finance the entire outfitting of the vehicle rather than just the base purchase price, so. We've already approved purchasing the vehicle and financing that part of it, so this would just basically change the financing part of it to the additional amount for outfitting equipment. I believe the interest rate is three point three five percent instead of three point four percent, but, um.
So, anything else to the agenda?
I would just say, right, so if we, everyone wants to, we'd have to add it to the agenda by unanimous vote today and approve it, or we can put it on the agenda next meeting.
You've come up on the agenda to be agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Bowen, second by Mrs. Volney, all in favor of adding resolution two thousand thirteen forty-six to the agenda?
Yes.
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 All opposed? Is there a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Second.
Second. I'm sorry.
Motion by, um, Mrs. Bowen, seconded by, uh, Mrs. Volney, all in favor?
Yes.
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 All opposed? Is there a motion for passage?
Would for passage.
Motion by Mrs. Bowen, is there a second?
Sorry?
Second by Mr. Schleeder, any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval?
Yes. Yes.
All opposed? That's it for the legislation here.
Hey, at this time, is there any old business, new business or announcements? I actually have two things.
Uh, I have, one thing I want to check.
Sure, go ahead.
I've been going to some of the businesses to see how, you know, things are going, and some, quite a few of those are in my board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, I went to the new, uh, furniture store, you know?
American Free?
Yeah, have you got a ribbon cutting or anything with them?
Yep. Have not.
Okay, they are, uh, I talked to Thaddeus, I mean, I told him who I was and whatever, and, uh, asked different, and he seemed, he was excited about doing something like that.
Okay, well, send something up quickly.
Okay, uh, he, um, you know, usually the, what happens, I told him to take a picture and a lot of times it's in the paper and whatever, and he said, well, we could really use the advertisement, and so, since they are a new business.
You have Jeff out there, right, Jeff?
So, uh, I mean, you know.
Depends on what it is.
But, yeah, but we could do it around his schedule maybe, 'cause he's there most of the time, but I just thought maybe, since he, he said he was really, would be really, really interested, maybe we could do that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. We can get the chamber involved and, you know, we'll.
So, do you take care of that then, or?
Yep, I can take care of that.
Okay, okay, I didn't know, but, uh.
Um, is there a certain day that he's available?
He's just the general manager, so I think he's there most of the time, but, you know, if you just check with him, you know, I, I would think that would be the best thing.
Okay. Okay.
Ray Tommy Russo wanted to speak to you too, about doing a, an, an opening of, of Russo's.
Perfect. Perfect. I'll stop over there. Um.
Yeah, I'll be good.
Something I wanted to say, me and the chief, um, me and Mark went down to Thistle Downs at their grand opening. Um, you know, it, it, it was very interesting, you know, we got to see how their security was, you know, um, in the facility, we got to see how they were handling the crowds. You know, how they're handling the parking, um, and, um, a bunch of minor issues. Um, from what I've seen, I, I mean, I was expecting a lot more people there.
Yeah, I, I mean, we got there for the actual opening and we were in line through the turn, not turn up, but the alp down.
Myself. I mean. I was shocked that the mayor wasn't there, I was shocked that a lot of people from the village wasn't there.
Didn't seem to be anywhere.
Or, I mean, I didn't see him there.
There's, I saw Brad Sellers, the mayor of Warren, two heights, 'cause you kind of miss him, he's seven foot tall.
Right.
Um, but, yeah, I saw him walking around, but that was the extent of it.
Didn't really see anyone from North Randall.
No. And, and it was okay, you know, I, I wasn't overly impressed with it, to be honest with you.
How many people did you think were in line, only because I, I saw the six o'clock news report where they were talking about things and, and I saw the, the, what, the.
I don't think it was any more than four hundred or five hundred people total between.
In line, right.
It was in line for the actual, when they opened the doors. And that, and then actually by the time the mayor and I got to the front to go in, two or three of those aisles behind us were already empty and hadn't been filled behind us.
Right.
So, you know, I, I think there was that first influx of people and that was pretty much it, 'cause I would imagine of the eleven hundred devices in there, at least half of them, there was nobody at.
So, okay, so the news must have been wrong, 'cause the news stated that it was totally filled, there was no machines.
I don't know, I don't know, but they were.
There were, there were open machines there when we were there.
And to be honest with you, they had, they had a lot of the, well, what we saw was a lot of their own personnel with their things around their necks sitting at the devices.
Oh, really?
Yes.
With V R P pass?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, there, there were representatives from the Hard Rock there also.
Correct.
We, we spoke with them, 'cause I recognized them, so.
Spies.
Yeah. But it, it was okay, like you said, it was okay, but, you know, you could tell that they're, they didn't touch the track, the rest of the track, as far as the other floors for the simulcastings and things like that.
Right.
Nothing that was, it was pretty much in the same condition when I left Randall. So there was really no upgrade to the actual facilities and that, and, um, they didn't do much with the parking lot, and the village did nothing to prepare for it, I mean, village was in pretty sad shape, so, yeah.
Yeah, they haven't gotten their trucks either.
No, no.
Well, in, in that particular situation, you know, I was just watching the news and that, but, don't you think what we have coming in is a lot higher end?
Totally different, first of all, first of all, there was nothing on the main floor other than the eleven hundred devices, there was nothing to draw your attention, there was no, uh, in fact, there was no restaurant inside their.
It's basically burger and fries.
They had like a diners, like there was a, you know, you could get chicken tenders and fries and hamburgers and stuff like that, there was, there was no high-end restaurant, which we're going to have. Um, obviously, there was no displays of anything to draw your attention, like the Hard Rock will have the memorabilia, uh, from the Rock Stars, they'll have the cars on display, all, none of that exists there. And that, and.
Then one, then, then one stage.
That's right.
And the stage, the stage, yeah, they had one, there, there was a live act at the far end, which you really couldn't hear up here at the other end at all.
Right. And they were using the old grandstand.
Right, the actual, you know, you know how when they do the Christmas, um, thing at the track here and then they have, they bring you into the restaurant area of that way, they don't even, Rand, Thistle Down doesn't have the tables, they just have the grandstand with the rolls of chairs. And then they had a stage down there where their, their major entertainment for the grand opening was, uh, Taylor Hicks and that, um, and that was it, so.
So, we're, we're definitely gonna be more higher end, you know, with the rock concerts and everything, and the steakhouse and the comedy and, you know, it's just gonna be.
Right. I, I think there's something in our place to want, to want you to come back again, I, I, I didn't see anything there.
Which, I mean, just by changing the memorabilia and the showcases and everything like that, and the different shows, different comedy acts that I have there.
Right. Car giveaways and.
Car giveaways, you know, all the special events they're gonna have there, it's gonna want to bring.
Just the fact that it's a Hard Rock International.
Right.
Exactly.
That in itself is a draw.
The one person said to me, um, on, they asked me about it and they said, if I have a child and I want to bring him to the, the racetrack and I walk through the casino.
Yes.
And I said, I, I, I think you can, you can't sit down at a machine with the child, but you will be able to walk through to get to the racing, to get to the, to our grandstand, to our.
Well, our grand, it's not connected.
It's not connected, but I mean, if you wanted to walk through and look and eat at the Hard Rock or eat at the casino.
Sure, the restaurant or the Hard Rock Cafe, absolutely, and that was one of the concerns that, you know, that we brought up when we met with John Lucas, the, the president of the Hard Rock.
Right.
Right.
Uh, like, what do you do on concert nights and that, and he said their intent is, well, first of all, they're gonna gravitate to the older crowd, they're looking at that forty to seventy-year-old crowd versus, like he said, you won't see Justin Bieber here, you won't see rappers up here. You know, you, you're gonna, you're gonna see an older entertainment, um, venue and that, and, um, and he said on concert nights that when they come to pick up their tickets or when they come to buy their tickets, they will be carded. And that, uh, and if they're eighteen or under, they will, uh, they will be either wristband or they will be stamped, so if they do walk into the casino and that, uh, you know, the security and that would be aware that they shouldn't be on the machines. So, they're gonna have to, and like he said, he said, we've been doing this for years, we, we know how to handle this.
We're not that mobile this time, yeah.
Right. So, yeah, nothing that he said that you guys are gonna need to be concerned about, and that we, we know how to handle the situation with the younger crowds, so. 'Cause the same thing on comedy club nights.
I mean, basically, Thistle Down reminded me of, if you've ever been to Vegas, there's old Vegas and there's new Vegas.
Yeah, you're right.
It, it reminded me of old Vegas, where you just went in and it's just there.
Yeah.
And ours is gonna be more like the new Vegas, more hipside, I think.
Well, I kind of heard, I don't know, but they, they might be considering moving even after they've done all this, I mean.
That's what I've heard.
Well, everything that was installed is removable.
I don't think it was put a lot into it. Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying.
Really?
Yes. I don't even, like I said, mayor and I weren't even convinced that they tacked down the carpet.
Okay.
So.
Yes, that's what, that's what we've heard, I, I don't know that.
Yeah.
So, and well, we have some things to be.
We've, we've heard, we've heard the rolling acres location is the one that's being considered.
Right. Um, the mayor will be going on vacation the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. Um, Mrs. Volney will assume the duties as mayor as I'm gone. I'm sure she will do a fantastic job. Um.
And, and will you be coming there?
Answer your phone.
Are we back for it?
Answer your phone.
I will, it's most tax season, I promise. Have a wonderful trip with you.
Thank you, I'm going to visit my sister in California, sure she'll be pretty nice. But that's all I have.
I will not be at the next one. I'll be returning from vacation later that evening. I will be gone the seventeenth through the twenty-fourth.
Have a good vacation.
Have a good vacation.
Have a good vacation.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mrs. Bowen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sully, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
I have an announcement, I'm not going on vacation.
Here, we have a question for you.